Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. So I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the Thursday, June seventeenth. Formal meeting, the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. Thus far, for commission members in attendance, I see Hench, Signs, Martin, Elliot, and Craig. Is Mark Nolte online? Did not see him yet. And we have Mrs. Townsend as excused absence. So if Mark joins, we'll just see him when he joins. Okay, so our call to order is done, roll call is done. Item number three, this is a public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If a member of the public would like to address Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission regarding an item that's not on tonight's agenda, now's your opportunity. Does anybody like to address the commission? So make yourself known. And I don't see anybody. So we'll go on to the next item. The first development item or the only development item tonight is item number four, case number REZ twenty-one dash zero 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 four. Applicant is LT Leon Associates Incorporated. Location is eleven twenty-five North Dodge Street. This is an application submitted for rezoning to community commercial with a planned development overlay for approximately seven point five acres of property. Request is to modify the conditional zoning agreement for this property to allow a drive-through for Hy-Vee's aisle online grocery pickup service. And Ray, is this your item?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, Ray, can I just want to note before you start that Mark Nolte just joined.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Ann. Ray Heitner, Neighborhood and Development Services. So here is an aerial view of the subject property. Eleven oh three and eleven twenty-five North Dodge Street. A line in the dash here, there is an existing Hy-Vee store kind of on the east end of the property. And on the west end, a gas station and convenience store. Here's an overlay of the zoning. The subject property is zoned. OPD CC two, Community Commercial. Want to make a couple notes of the surrounding zoning here. There is a little kind of section of P one Public Zoning right here, kind of in the northwest, that's for an existing radio tower in that location. And then to the north and west, you have kind of a mix of RSA and RS five zoning, but particularly RSA kind of across the street from, you know, the heart of the discussion tonight. So some background on the application. The greater site was rezoned to OPD CC two back in twenty thirteen to make way for the present day Hy-Vee store. In May of twenty twenty-one, the city received an application to revise conditions to that CZA from twenty thirteen to update the OPD plan reflecting the proposed change to allow the somewhat permanent aisles online grocery pickup kiosk and drive-through lanes. And wanted to make a note that I'll talk about this a little bit more later on as well, but so this is sort of the first step of, I guess you could call it the greater project review process. One of the subsequent steps is that because it's a drive-through being proposed in a CC two zone, there is a special exception requirement for that drive-through facility from the Board of Adjustment. I'm just going to show you some pictures of kind of the current property here. This is looking northward, kind of on the north side of the parking lot. And you can see right now, there's sort of a a temporary aisles online facility here, kind of this modular building at the north end of the parking lot. And here's another view, again, just kind of looking to the north, you'll notice the groceries, I think, are more or less collected together in this location and then distributed to these parking spaces that have kind of the red signs for people to pick up their groceries. Here's a view kind of looking to the south. So this would be sort of coming in from the entrance from St. Clement's Street. You can see that there's an existing two-way lane here. And there are a couple of parking spaces that appear to have been blocked off here probably to prevent any kind of potential conflicts with the pickup location. Here's a look of you looking northward. Again, this is just north of kind of the existing modular facility. This is a look at the current landscape screen to St. Clement and the properties on the other side of St. Clement over here than in RSA. Right now, there's four kind of overstoryed trees in this buffer area and I believe the count was about twenty-two shrubs in this location. Here's just another view looking north down the sidewalk line. And this is just another view looking north from the parking lot. Pretty similar to one of the other views we had. And another view looking south, again, just a clear look at that kind of two-way traffic setup. So this is an OPD rezoning because it is an amendment to that CZA from twenty thirteen. The OPD originally was required in twenty thirteen because of impact to critical slopes, created more than thirty-five percent of critical slopes at the time. So that's the rationale for the OPD. And this, most of you are familiar with with these kind of OPD rezonings. There is some sort of additional criteria that we have to review. I'll go through each of those right now. And then that's in addition to kind of the standard rezoning review criteria that we always look at with rezonings with respect to consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. So the first of those kind of additional OPD criteria, that the density and design is compatible with adjacent development. There is no density to speak of as far as residential density goes as a commercial project, but you know, the big focus, not just with this component of review, but also with kind of site plan and design review later on is just, you know, how these proposed structures will fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. So in terms of scale of the proposed buildings, kiosk building will be about eleven hundred fifty square feet. Canopy will be a little bit taller than sixteen feet, both of which, if you were to size those up against the gas station and convenience store to the west, are significantly smaller than those facilities. And as I mentioned earlier, the kiosk building and canopy will be subject to city's design review process. And that's a result of the existing condition within the CZA that staff is recommending to keep. Second point of criteria, that development will not overburden existing streets and utilities. The kiosk facility will only require electrical facilities to the building. There will be an additional pedestrian sidewalk connecting kiosk to the existing sidewalk to the north. And while you can maybe argue that there might be some increased traffic intensity in this specific area with the kiosk, it's not expected that the kiosk will generate a lot of trips or maybe even any trips above and beyond you know, what the grocery store site currently sees. You know, it's thought that the kiosk and drive-through facility would really just be kind of a substitute for pre-existing trips to the greater site. Third point of review criteria, development will not adversely affect views, property values, privacy. So there will be some additional screening that is in the OPD plan, landscape plan. Screening the kiosk from the north. That'll be about doubling the amount of S three kind of shrub screening to the north. Couple other factors to consider. The aisles online facility does have certain hours under which it'll operate. The applicant statement said more or less that will typically be between about eight AM and ten PM. There might be some variability with those hours, but more or less, you're probably looking at, you know, what you would consider maybe customer working hours or maybe construction hours. So and then the last point I wanted to touch on here, and this was expanded upon a little bit within the staff report, but there are a couple of points when staff was reviewing the OPD plan, we noticed there are a couple of areas just to the north of the property where the existing lighting is not compliant in terms of the foot candle usage. So we made a note in staff report and we'll note again here that when this project does go through site plan review, staff will be requiring a compliant lighting plan that meets the allowable threshold for light that can be emitted off-site. Fourth point of OPD criteria, land use and building types will be in the public interest. Comprehensive plan, future land use map does show the site is being appropriate for general commercial uses, which would be fitting of not just the primary use Hy-Vee, but also this additional kiosk and drive-through use. It's noted in the applicant statement and I'm sure anecdotally, most of us that get groceries in the area could probably support this claim that online orders have increased dramatically throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic and thereby, you know, there is kind of a need to help facilitate development of these facilities, but in a manner that, you know, is in the city's best interests and is least impactful as possible and kind of surrounding properties. So kind of transitioning to the standard rezoning review criteria in terms of consistency with comp plan. You know, when the greater site was sort of analyzed in twenty thirteen for the rezoning to OPD CC two, it was done so in a way that would try to respect the direction from the north east district plan that would, that called for sort of a Main Street style development in this area, particularly with the Dodge Street frontage. So that's one reason why you see sort of a shallow setback from the side of grocery store building to Dodge Street. You know, with the use of the time to the west being the gas station and convenience store, there was conditions put in to make sure there was S three screening in a sort of considerable thirty-five foot buffer on the west side of the property. And then an additional condition that sort of had some limitations on what signage could be placed within the west side thirty-five foot buffer and then also on the north side. And so there are some similar steps that the applicant has taken to lessen any negative impact for residents in the north with this proposed facility. I already mentioned kind of the upscale updated landscaping, probably being, you know, the biggest contributor to that. The actual drive-through lanes will be about eighty-five feet or so from the properties to the north, which is a fairly considerable distance in staff's view. And then also just sort of from a design review perspective, and this this will be analyzed a bit more at design review, but kind of the combination of materials on the kiosk building would be appropriate as well. And here's just emitted an image looking north at the southern end of the property. And you can just see that shallow setback with the existing Hy-Vee building as well as our notice for rezoning. Maybe you can see the font here. I apologize if you can't, but this is basically just a sketch-up on an aerial that shows where that thirty-five foot buffer on the west side of the property exists. In terms of compatibility with the existing neighborhood character, you know, I already mentioned to the west and north, there is sort of that mixture of single-family and multifamily residential. Again, the updated landscaping to the north is probably the biggest method to provide a sensible transition to the north. But there's also probably an argument to that the kiosk itself will act a little bit as a visual and noise barrier to the three lanes of aisles online traffic. So this is a, just kind of a zoomed out view of the proposed landscaping plan. It's hard to see real detail here, and I apologize, the image is a little bit blurry, but basically within here is where you're going to see more or less a doubling of kind of the shrubs that are already in this location. There will be efforts to preserve the existing four red oak trees that are in this location as well. Here's a view of the kiosk building with canopy. Just to kind of give you a visual of the three lanes of traffic, how they'll feed in, this would be looking north. Canopy overhead here just for one row of parking and then kiosk building there. And then here's just another view of some of the proposed schematics, kiosk and canopy. So I mentioned that the greater project itself sort of has several steps, you know, there's this OPD rezoning step that it was currently being discussed here tonight at Planning and Zoning Commission and upon recommendation to City Council. City Council would have a public hearing, being that this is a rezoning. There's also that requirement for the special exception for the drive-through lanes to the Board of Adjustment that will be analyzed to kind of our drive-through lane criteria within the code as well as design review for the kiosk building and canopy satisfying existing condition and a condition that we're recommending carryover for. And then there's also a site plan review component as there is with commercial developments. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning subject to five conditions. First, that that buffer, thirty-five foot buffer on the west side of the property is maintained with the S three screening standard. This is same as in condition in the previous or the existing CZA, however you want to term it. Second, that there would be no signs permitted within that thirty-five foot buffer or on the north side of the convenience store facing residential development with a few exceptions. One being a monument sign at the intersection of Dodge Street and Prairie Sheen Road. And no more than two freestanding signs permitted along the Dodge Street frontage with some allowance for fascia or monument signs that might be permitted by code. Again, that's a carryover condition. Three, that's any building or structure, including canopies, as is the case here, would be of a quality design appropriate for voting residential neighborhood. And the design of those buildings and associated structures would be approved by the Design Review Committee prior to issuing a building permit. Again, that's a carryover condition for that existing evergreen screening and mature trees that we preserved along the northwest side of the property wherever possible. Another carryover condition. And then lastly, just sort of an amendment to an existing condition on this front, that development and landscaping will be generally consistent with the attached plan. In this case, the plan dated from June eighth of twenty twenty-one. So just reflecting, updating this condition to reflect the updated plan. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ray. Now's the opportunity for members of the commission to ask questions of staff if they have them before we go into the hearing port, public hearing portion. Ray, could you just define for me, I've asked this all the time and I just never remember the definition or the standard for S three screening?
Yeah, sure. So S three screening is kind of one of our higher screening standards. And it's intended to, you know, provide a suitable degree of screening between kind of commercial projects like this and residential properties. So the intent of the S three screen is, you know, to provide a bit more coverage than you might have from one of our lower screening applications. So ultimately, what you would have in an S three screen would be kind of a dense row or possibly rows of shrubbery with a mature height of five to six feet. So at maturity, you're looking at a fairly dense screening that would, you know, be an attractive sort of application between most residential uses and commercial uses.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the commission have a question for staff on this application?
Yeah, Ray, um, so in a, in this particular instance, which is fairly unique, does the applicant have to prove a need to the city before you, as you are talking about this? And you have to, do you look at, you know, the fact that there's already a drive-through there? Do you kind of, tell me what you take into consideration or do you, do they just present the application and you bring it to us? I don't, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so when we draft the CZA for the rezoning, you know, we always have to address how the rezoning creates a public need or you know, how the, how the rezoning responds to public needs. So you know, I think in this instance, I would argue probably one of the biggest public needs is that there's just a sort of demand-driven need for this kind of facility. I would say springing off that, you know, I think there is a need for the additional enhanced screening as a result of the facility. You know, I think and then I think the existing conditions have, you know, needs that have already sort of been articulated that will re-articulate within the CZA in terms of making that adequate transition from a commercial use to the residential uses to the north and west.
Um, okay. Yes, that, I don't know that that question, that answer really answered my question, but is this a public need or a business need? You know, I don't, sorry, I don't shop at Hy-Vee very often, but photos that you took, there were lots of empty parking spaces in those aisles. I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around three lanes seems like a lot for drive-through groceries in a town, in a town our size. But who knows, maybe that is what really needs to happen. I'm just trying to understand as you talk about a public need. Is that serving the public or is that just what a business wants? When you're, you just said that if we did this, then the city could have, make them do more screening, make more, do more things. Is that an end goal here? I guess I just, I'm a little perplexed.
Yeah, sure. No, it's a good question. Um, so I think in terms of, you know, the volume that's needed or the demand that's needed for the facility. You know, we don't have a ton of data to go off that as planning staff, right? So that might be something that the applicant or the representative from Hy-Vee can sort of address, right? Like what that need is. You know, I think given the proposal at hand, you know, there would be public needs in terms of just how that use is incorporated into the pre-existing commercial site and then how we best incorporate that use in a manner that provides a sensible transition to pre-existing sort of residential uses. And so that's where you get your needs for, you know, enhanced landscaping for buffers that may be discussed and so on. I don't know if that helped answer your question or still confusing.
No, but I have lots more questions for the applicant, so I'll just keep listening.
And if I could just add to what Ray said, this is Ann. When we were reviewing this rezoning, we were reviewing it based on the OPD rezoning criteria. That is our responsibility. Does it meet those four criteria related to density and infrastructure and that type of thing? And then also consistency with the comprehensive plan and consistency and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. When we get into the specifics of the drive-through in terms of stacking spaces and driveways and that type of thing, there are specific criteria that need to be looked at as part of the special exception process. And that information has not been provided to staff at this time yet because they are not there yet. This is, this is just the rezoning.
I have a question. Um, first is to affirm what I believe is the truth, which is that to get the drive-through designation, they need to do this, but they could, I mean, what they have now is entirely legal and they could continue to do that. So they're just trying to make what they have, the service that they have now more efficient, I would guess, right? I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that keeps them from doing what they're doing now. Right?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I, yeah, I'm sure it's to gain some efficiency on the company's part, yeah.
Um, could you go back to your slides and the, it's either the last one or the second to the last one where you, where you say looking north? Well.
Getting there, hold on, sorry.
I'm still learning to read the plans, you know, when they, when they give you the spec sheets and things. And I finally figured out that if it's cross-hatched, it means things are being deleted. Is that correct? Not?
Not, uh, not always. So, you know, a cross-hatching could mean that you know, it's just an area that will be
Okay.
not open to vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic maybe per se. So Um not open to vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic maybe per se. So uh, yeah, the the symbology is sort of. Dependent on on the plan you're looking at in in most cases.
Okay, is there one looking south?
Yes, uh. See. Okay. Oops.
Yes, okay, that's the one. Oops.
Shoot, sorry about this.
All right, that's all right. When I'm in the meeting, I can't look at my own computer. There we go.
Yeah.
Yes, that one. So from the plans as I. I as I can am interpreting them. All that that unit where you store the carts, that goes away. And in fact, that island down there goes away. And. The drive through lanes are here. What I don't understand then is. This the very last slide you show where you show four vehicles, three of them are in the drive up lanes. And one of them is not, and yet they're all facing the same way. And it seems like that one that's not in a drive up lane should be going the other way. Am I wrong?
Um, yeah, so these three lanes would all be going southbound.
Correct.
And then, I believe there's angled parking shown here on the plan. So, I mean, I think. This is sort of just a schematic.
Okay.
So I i- it's not necess- this isn't something.
I got very confused when I saw this slide and I had to go back and try and figure out. Or in the plans, how to figure out how that fourth car is going the same way as the other three.
Sure.
Well, I guess that's something they can figure out. And the other question, I meant to drive up there today. I didn't get it done. There is a drive up for the pharmacy, right? Or is there not?
Yes, there is a drive up for the pharmacy.
And and that has to, because the driver has to be on the other side. So so the. The the traffic going to the pharmacy is going to be going the other way.
The.
Because.
Yeah.
The driver has to be close to the building, so they have to be on the inside.
The the pharmacy, though, is actually configured a little bit differently than that. You go under the, if I can just write on this, Ray.
Sure.
This is, I think, the pharmacy pickup here. And the where you put your, where you get the prescriptions is actually right there. So you're actually, you enter it this way. Sorry, you can't see that, but you enter it headed north and the driver driver on the left side is. Um, is not against the building, it's against this little island there. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes it makes sense. Thank you. That makes way more sense.
They use.
Cause I thought they would, that the traffic would be going opposite ways and it would be confusing. But now I understand. Thank you. That's all I had.
It's like the the Hy-Vee drugstore at First and uh Rochester.
Yeah.
The pharmacy pickup lane there.
They they use pneumatic tubes like a bank tell by.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Or like, I mean, Walgreens, where I go, has that second lane that's a pneumatic tube. So this, that's the only way you. Work it here. I understand. Thank you.
While we're, while you're in this neighborhood, um. Ray, can you go back? Wow.
Uh, yeah.
I gotta need to go back to the slides. Those those cargo containers. So I think this kind of picks up maybe on. One of the questions that was asked earlier to clarify. The cargo containers that are there now, which I think are present at all the Hy-Vee's in in the market right now. And that's what they're using for their for their own aisles online pickup. It so is there any code about those being there and did they have to get permission to put them there? Are they, i- is it a limited term that they can leave them there? I mean, I guess I do see the proposal for a nice facility to be an improvement over that, but I just wonder what is the, what's the basis here?
Yeah, Anne, do you know if they had to receive a temporary permit for those facilities at all?
I don't believe any permits were pulled for those.
Yeah.
And um, I think they're meant to be temporary for all of the Hy-Vee's. We have special exception applications. I think all of them, Hy-Vee's require a special exception for the drive through. So um. They're they're working to get these properly permitted through the process they're going through now.
And so while I'm while I'm here, um. Parking spaces, it is I, it seems to me as I casually, I don't get up there a whole lot, but it seems like every time I am up there, the parking lot is fairly full. And we're removing, I don't know how many spaces are being removed. Is there any requirement that the remaining spaces still meet the original parking space requirement? Uh cause from from my experience, most commercial pro- most commercial projects put in the absolute minimum allowed parking spaces. Uh that they have to have. And so assuming that was the case here and we take out fifteen or twenty of them. They don't have the minimum amount anymore. Is there any, is there any consideration that we need to be given to that?
Yeah, so I can't um. I ca- I can't speak anecdotally to, you know, how crowded the parking lot gets, cause I don't.
Right.
Too often, but um. The the facility is currently overparked by quite a bit um in in terms of what our code requires. So um. Right now, there's two hundred and forty seven parking spaces um and with this. Facility that would be reduced down to two hundred and fifteen. So you'd be looking at removing about thirty two spaces, but um. The requirement um right now is only a hundred and eighty nine spaces. So. Um it would still meet the required number of parking. You know, uh. What effects that that might have on. How crowded it gets, uh, you know, peak times of the day, uh, you know, sort of to be determined and. You know, I'm sure Hy-Vee will sort of monitor that.
Yeah.
Going along, but um. But yeah, they they do, even with this uh plan improvement, they would meet our baseline for parking requirement.
Okay, that's a good answers my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions from commissioners or staff?
I have a question on page through the staff report. On halfway down, it says applicant has chosen not to utilize the city's good neighbor policy for this rezoning. Can you, how, what does that mean um in terms of community input or neighborhood input?
Uh, yeah, it it, you know. We encourage applicants to utilize the good neighbor process that we have set up. Um with, you know, every application that comes to this commission. The uh applicant, just for this case, uh has not used and has not used and has not used. The uh good neighbor meeting uh. Process, and so we just wanted to make a note of that. Um. You know, in terms of what that means for outreach, of course, that good neighbor process is a really good tool. To facilitate that outreach, um. I I I can't say uh what maybe Hy-Vee has done. You know, or sort of at the the. At the store level to maybe communicate this proposed change, I'm not sure, but um. One thing I will say is um. We've had our signage on this property for several weeks um now, um and we've. Uh we sent out our our notification letters on this uh rezoning about three weeks ago. And well, I I don't know if that's a perfect substitute for good neighbor meeting. I will say that um. We haven't received a whole lot of public comment or feedback on this particular rezoning. Um. We've received a few phone calls, uh mostly just curious about what the nature of the rezoning is, but not really any comment. Sort of more or less for or against the rezoning, so um take that for whatever that's worth, but um. Yeah, I uh, again, in the staff board, we just wanted to make note that the good neighbor uh meeting process was not being utilized for this application.
Any more, any other questions? And if not, we'll go ahead and ho- open the public hearing. So if the applicant or the applicant's representative would make themselves known, known, and now's your opportunity to speak on your application.
Good evening, uh council, or sorry, excuse me, commission. Uh, my name is John Brown. I'm director of site planning with Hy-Vee fifty eight twenty West Town Parkway. That's in West Des Moines, Iowa. Um, I I think. Uh a little background on how we got to uh this application would help with a lot of the questions I've been hearing. Prior to twenty twenty, uh we were uh taking baby steps uh towards figuring out e-commerce uh that's uh. You know, creating an app and allowing our customers to order their groceries online, and then we pick, we shop for them and then deliver them to their vehicle. Uh we were seeing, you know, at our busiest stores, maybe fifty or sixty orders in a day. And we could easily take care of that with a few parking stalls out in front of the store and just having our employees run. Uh totes of their of the ordered groceries out to those vehicles. Um and it, we handled it fine that way. Uh and we expected that that growth originally to. Be a slower growth, frankly. Uh and then uh COVID came along and changed everybody's plans. And especially ours. Uh so what we saw right away was uh a- as soon as the lockdown orders came and uh. The severity of the pandemic became evident. Uh we s- we saw a huge spike in that e-commerce. Uh orders. So uh we went from, you know, those fifty or sixty orders a day to nine hundred to a thousand orders in a day. So. Huge order of magnitude. Uh and that stayed steady all through the pandemic um so that most of our stores, this one included. We're seeing about uh seven to ten percent of the our total sales are just e-commerce orders. So people are in the groceries and picking them up. Instead of actually wanting to park in the lot and come into the store and shop. Uh from. We're we're taking a little bit of a risk here by uh spending as much money as we are building this facility out, but from all the research that we see in the industry. Uh this is a trend that's not going to go away. Uh we anticipate. That uh e-commerce orders and online grocery shopping, um since everybody's been exposed to it now and has discovered it's convenient. Um and as uh our application gets better and our shopping gets better and the ability to provide good service gets better. Uh we anticipate and the industry anticipates that uh up to thirty percent of the volume the store does could be of all our grocery stores. Do could be e-commerce orders. And so we needed to find. Um a way really quickly during the pandemic in order to get. I I'm backing up a little bit here, but during the, when the pandemic hit, we had to figure out a way really quick. To get pallets and pallets of these uh grocery orders out of the front of our building and keep customers from stacking up along the front of our building. Um to pick up the orders and keep them from spilling out onto Dodge Street and blocking up traffic. Um. That's where the container came in. Uh frankly, we knew. That we were probably weren't going to get uh approval to just put those in in any community. Um so. Not the, not the best neighborly move, but we 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 made one of those executive decisions uh for. The sake of our customers and for the sake of the community and for the sake of our stores, um to put the containers in the parking lot um without asking for permission. We did get uh. They had to be hooked up to electricity, so we did get electrical permits for them to make sure that they were safe to operate that way. Um what we're doing now is trying to rectify that situation. We know this, we know that the. The need is there and we're gonna have to continue providing it. Uh we need to make this legal. We need to make it work correctly. We need to get rid of the containers. Frankly, they're. Not the prettiest looking things. Um and so uh this is, this is the concept that we've uh developed uh over the last year and a half now. Uh we have four that are built finally. Customers love them. It handles the rush hour traffic, which is four to six P M. When people, people typically place their orders in the morning. And then pick their order up on their way home from work, so they don't have to deal with the grocery store at all. Um so that that's the rush hour. Um. In this scenario, we have three lanes are, I I think there is a comment about the the section that shows four cars. Our typical layout is is four lanes, and so I think you got uh. Kind of a hacked up rendering to show three lanes, a three lane canopy with the fourth car still sitting there. So I apologize for the confusion on that. So this is three lanes. It can hold twenty seven vehicles. The orders are picked inside the grocery store, uh depending on their temperature. They're packed into insulated totes. And uh packed with dry ice or frozen water bottles, depending on what temperature they need to be kept at. The totes are then stored in refrigerated space or cooled space. And then an hour before a customer is expected to arrive and pick up their order, these are brought out um on a large. Uh we have a racking system with the electric trolley that drags the this racking system of about forty totes. Out to the, out to this facility. And then from there, uh our employees are really close to the customer and can and can get those. Groceries into the customer's trunk right away. Uh another thing uh we ran into during COVID was um. Vaccinations uh with our pharmacies. We had to put another set of containers in a lot of our sites um in order to provide for drive up vaccinations. It's likely that we're gonna see the need for booster shots and seasonal flu shots are probably gonna be more demand in the future. Uh so we've created a space at the front of this kiosk where our pharmacy team can roll out. Um some of their cabinets and things uh seasonally, and we can use the first lane. Uh to provide COVID booster shots, uh if that becomes a reality for all of us. Uh so that that that's something that's come up recently, um yeah, even after we uh applied here. Uh the materials we're using on this uh building will match the existing store really well. The inside of the building is pretty Spartan. It's a truck finish concrete floor. Um it's just uh plywood walls. It looks like a Northwoods cabin inside. It's got lighting. It's got uh two. Small H B A C units to keep the space comfortable. Uh there's a door in the back facing the store. That's a standard vendor door. Has a leaf in it. Uh that's where product is brought in and then the 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 door where the employees interact with customers is a a glass slider under the canopy. Um I think I've. Probably talked long enough and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for John from members of the commission?
Yes. Um, okay, so. You've answered a question that I hadn't even gotten to ask yet. Uh because my curiosity is the intended use, you know, is it in perpetuity? And I understand that you're talking about um the pandemic, which hopefully is nearing an end soon. So, and I understand during the pandemic, your numbers were enormous. What if? Numbers of your, of the aisles online decline drastically? What happens with this space? You know, what if you go, what if you max three hundred instead of? You said you started with ninety and went to a thousand. What if that does not sustain? What happens to that space? Four lanes is even, that's seems to me, and I am not in the grocery business, that seems all like a lot. So I just am curious to know what happens with this space if you don't need it. And how does that serve the public? How does, how does that meet a public need?
That that's a fair question. Um. It's it's really a risk based analysis and a risk that we've taken. Um frankly, if we're, if we're not in the e-commerce business and we're not meeting our customers' expectations. This little kiosk building is the really the least of our problems. We'll be worried about keeping the lights on in the grocery store. Um you'll have an empty box there. If this doesn't work out for some reason and we need the parking stalls back, obviously, we're gonna have to spend. If this doesn't work out for some reason and we need the parking stalls back, obviously, we're going to have to spend the money and restore the site back to the way it was. Because we will need the parking stalls if everything reverts back that way. But we don't. We're investing an awful lot of money in basically a hundred and eighteen locations doing the same, exact same thing. In the anticipation that we are going to have to be successful in this space in order to remain viable as a grocery store.
So you're hoping that building this, taking away those parking spots, those parking spots wouldn't be needed anyway. You're
correct.
In my understanding, you're sort of hoping for less.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not hoping. If ten percent of the volume is gone, then that's ten percent of the parking stalls you don't actually need anymore because people aren't parking and shopping. They're picking the groceries up instead. I, I don't have actual data to support that yet, but anecdotally, we're, we are seeing that.
Can you clarify the? Sorry, Phoebe, the questions that you're asking about like public need, their use doesn't have to serve a public need. The public need comes in when we are imposing conditions on Hy-Vee.
And that's
from their, their application. So I just want to make sure that, yeah.
That is my understanding. We brought it up a couple of times. So I thought, okay, let me shift my thinking then. So apologies if I didn't quite understand that. Just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you have more questions about kind of that distinction, let me know. But yeah, the public need analysis is about the conditions that we impose, that the city imposes on Hy-Vee.
Perfect. Thank you. One last question for John is, um, can you, and maybe it's, maybe the answer is zero, but how much more concrete is being added for this? On your side? I couldn't, I couldn't quite tell. Okay.
There should, there should be zero.
In any additional questions for John from members of the commission?
I noticed there in, in the demolition plan, it appeared, there's a note saying that pretty much all those shrubs and trees along St. Clement Street are being torn out. And then later on in the landscaping plan, it shows a whole bunch of new ones being put back in. And, you know, and so I have, I, I question the, the tear out part. Having seen so closer and seen that there's a probably about an eight-foot buffer of sod between those shrubs and whether any construction is going to happen. I guess I'm questioning the need to tear out the shrubs in the first place.
I'm, I'm guessing our engineer is being a little bit conservative and just assuming that those shrubs are probably going to get damaged during the construction process. And so we're just being honest with ourselves and making sure that that, that's in the budget to replace all that. If we can save them, we'll save them.
And it's just a lot of construction projects do that. And I hate to see it just personally. The other thing, the other comment I would have, and I guess ask if you have thoughts or if you've addressed this in your, in your process. I know with, with some of these temporary locations and things that have been going on the last year, and I totally understand the need. I am not, I'm not saying that, that. But a lot of times towards the end of the day, we end up with a whole bunch of piles of empty totes sitting around on the outside of the containers. And you've got that large area hatched off where there's not going to be parking at that, at the delivery end of, of the unit. And I'm wondering if, if some, if some fencing or some other type of screening to provide an area for that kind of activity to take place and yet not be just a bunch of stacks of totes sitting out in the middle of the parking lot. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we, we've heard that question before, and I personally don't like it that our stores are stacking totes outside of those shipping containers when they're done with them. I think a lot of that is the function of the, the shipping container itself. It's just inconvenient to put the totes back in and then drag them back to the store. The intent here is for the totes, the empty totes to go back in the kiosk and they can be loaded back on those racks and taken back to the store to be washed instead of stacking them outside. And the other reason for that clear space is we'd like to be able to keep that as parking, but obviously that's not realistic because you'll have a line of vehicles blocking them in at all times. So we've Chevroned it out.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing none. Thank you, John. John, is there anybody else with the applicant that would like to speak on your behalf?
I have Louis Leon. He's our engineer. He's, he's available to answer any technical questions you might have about the project as well.
Are there any technical questions for members of the commission for the engineer? Doesn't appear to be. Thank you, John. Is there a member, this is a public hearing? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this application? Second call for any member of the public that would like to speak to the commission regarding this application. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'd entertain, entertain a motion on this item.
Second.
Motion by Sines. The second was by
Craig.
Craig, thank you, Susan. Discussion. I'll start off. I'm spending a lot of time and thinking lately about improving community resiliency for future pandemics or for future similar type events. And I find that this rezoning would, and this construction subsequent to the rezoning would be part of that whole community wide, wide building resilience. And so I, I, I like this. I like that they're doing this because yeah, I think the demand has been created and I think we're getting ready so that when something happens like this in the future, we have the ability to respond nimbly to future events. So I think this is just the shape of things to come in many areas of our lives. Lessons learned from the pandemic.
I think you're right, Michael, and, and that this is the future and to think that once people have you know, reaped the benefit of that convenience, I myself like to pick out my own bananas, but I know there are other people that don't care what color their bananas are. And you know, I'd rather they got their peanut butter and cereal from a local store than from Amazon. So I, I'm supportive because those, what's there is really ugly.
And I, I just think in general, I totally agree. It's not all going away. And you know, we've seen that in our, in the real estate industry, you know, we've, the, the pandemic forced us to start doing video tours and video this and video that. And, and now, now the consumer expects it. And I, and I would agree that, you know, maybe it's not going to go up, you know, thousands of percentages, but it's not going away either. And so I think I'd like, like you, I'd much rather have this than a bunch of temporary cargoes in the, in the parking lot. And I get, I get why they're there. I get the, it was a, you know, yeah. But this is a good, to me, this is the, the appropriate next step is to figure out a more permanent solution to that. I did also just, I guess Phoebe had commented about the lanes and the number of cars there and I, and I guess I know, you know, some of these stores, I, I've got picked up a couple of times at the waterfront Hy-Vee. They've got like thirty parking spaces on the side dedicated to the drive-up and people are in and out of those constantly. And so I, you know, I do think especially during rush hour, you're going to have a lot of cars. The, the reality is, I understand, and John can, can correct me. You know, basically, it's a waiting line. The activity is all happening at the, under the canopy at the far end. The rest of the space is just a place for people to go. So they're not sitting out on the, on the highway or on the, on the, on the public street. And that's, that would be my interpretation of it. And I think that's based on the traffic I've seen, you know, myself. Yeah, there, there's a lot of cars come through there in the evening time especially.
Any additional discussion by members of the commission? Hearing none.
Sorry, Mike, did you say real call?
Please.
Sines?
Yes.
Townsend is absent. Craig?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Hench?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Nolte?
Yep.
So the motion was approved six-zero with Townsend absent. Next item on the agenda. We'll flip to the right page. Item number five, discussion on returning to in-person meetings. Anne?
Yes, I just wanted to give the commission an opportunity to discuss this together as a group. There has been no decision made one way or the other for commissions at this point in terms of going back to in-person meetings. City Council is going back to in-person meetings next month at their first meeting in July. So I think I, it's really just an opportunity for the commission to discuss how they would like to move forward.
So council's going back after July one, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the Board of Supervisors is back fully to public meetings. I personally, as a person who's been to work every day throughout the pandemic, really wanted to start seeing more people and I miss in-person meetings. So I support this starting in July.
I think that if we're going to continue to have all of our groceries delivered, we should continue zooming. I mean, I thought that was kind of funny. So, yeah, if we're going to embrace the pandemic life, let's just stay on Zoom.
Well, and you know, what, what we're doing at, at our office, and I think most of our offices is a hybrid model, actually. You know, I personally have no problem coming back to a live meeting and I, and I would welcome it, quite frankly, I, I, I agree. I'm just kind of anxious to get to see y'all in person. But there may be, there may be members of the public who aren't comfortable with that and who, who maybe need an alternative. I know it, it just makes it a lot more work for everybody probably, but I just throw that out there that, you know, so my weekly meetings, I continue to broadcast them, you know, on Zoom and I have lots of my agents in the office. So just a thought.
I think going hybrid is definitely more work for people. We do hybrid at Blankham McKeon as well, but you do bring up a very good point. Until my kids were fully vaccinated, which actually they are fully vaccinated as of Sat- this coming Saturday. But there, that's because my kids are twelve and older, you know, with all the littles until I, my thought is we definitely would need to, if we are going to do in person or we would need to have a hybrid option, because I do think that that will also allow for more public input and make sure that people are comfortable. Because if someone is, you know, going through cancer or has a, you know, taking some of those medications, that the vaccine cannot protect them, that puts them at added risk. You know, people with kids younger than twelve who still aren't vaccinated, it puts going home to their families still further at risk. So I, if, if that was, if that was the consensus, I would say at least it needs to be is my opinion.
Does that embark a vote for Zoom?
Just offer that I like the opportunity. I mean, tonight I carpool, I picked up kids from baseball and, you know, it's, I like the flexibility of the Zoom. So if we do stay hybrid, but I'm, I'm fine either way.
In the past, couldn't people participate telephonically? If they chose to? I mean, I feel like all city boards and commissions offered that and I I recollect times when there were city council members on the telephone. Which I think
That is listed on the front page as an option, the phone number.
I mean, it's just probably easier, not as much work for staff.
How many?
I mean, I would ask them their opinion about that, but I would guess that that's much easier and, and that to try and do Zoom at the same time you're doing live is probably a fair amount of work. I don't know. I would bow to what the staff says about that.
How, how many people can be on the phone at one time?
Multiple people, I think.
Yeah.
Anne?
Yeah, for, for Zoom meetings, it can be multiple people. But I think pre-pandemic, if, you know, there's been maybe a couple instances where a commissioner couldn't attend in person. I don't even know if it was a commission meeting. We didn't
Yeah.
They've phoned in. I know they've done it for council, but that's pretty rare.
Yeah, we've
Time. But I think that we could only have, if I recall, Carolyn Dyer, Dwyer and I had to phone in at the same time. And that was really problematic. And this was years ago, of course.
Yeah.
So I don't know. But and at least on Zoom, then you know exactly who's, you know, you have a list of the humans' names. Oftentimes, well, at least us are faces, but yeah.
Um, there is one thing. The loosening of the electronic regulations for public meetings was allowed by the governor's emergency proclamation. My understanding that's going to expire June twenty-sixth. So I don't know, some of these options will still be available for governmental public meetings. I mean, our, our, our counselor will have to weigh in on that, but you know, there's always been an option for some electronic meeting uses, but it was really loosened up by the governor's proclamation, emergency proclamation. So whether it's even allowed and to what extent, that's kind of a legal council question. But there's also technology issues about if the city council chambers can readily adapt to hybrid meetings. Because it, as the person who does this, it's really hard. When you're having a meeting and you're having to manage the technology of the meeting and the Zoom piece. Oh, boy, oh, boy, it's difficult and a lot of things can go wrong. So, you know, I, I understand why people like those, but as a person who's had to handle it at the worker's end, it's really hard and very difficult and staffing issues become problematic. And as somebody who's very sympathetic to medical issues, people can still mask up, you know, so let's not forget that people still have that option if they have, if they're immunocompromised. Because that's their true defense, being masked up.
That's a good point, Mike. About the open meetings, I think that might, like a hybrid might be necessary or, you know, like at a minimum, hybrid. But I'm going to have to consult with my colleagues before I give you an opinion on, on what exactly we can do if, if we even know at this point.
In the latest governor's proclamation, I think it was section sixty-five or sixty-seven dealing with electronic meetings. So you don't have sorts for all that if you look at that.
So I'm coming up on being on the board for a year and I've never seen any of you in person. So it would be nice to meet in person, except maybe January and February. You know, you do get used to the convenience of, you know.
I'm, I'm thirty pounds lighter in person.
I am too.
Anne, have you received the feedback you need?
Yeah, I have. And in addition to checking with Sarah on the legal question, I will check with I T on hybrid capabilities.
Just, thank you.
I, I know that the council is going to start meeting at the senior center. I think that's because of their technological capabilities and space issues. So if we do get back together, it would likely be in that location. Because our meetings tend to draw larger groups.
Yeah, it went well for Des Moines this week.
Yeah.
Oh, cross our fingers to avoid that. Oh, boy. Okay, so item number six, consideration of beating minutes from May sixth. Does anybody have any major corrections or additions they'd like to point out from those minutes?
Yes, I think the first item under recommendation to city council, it says by a vote of six to zero, Martin dissenting. Which probably should be six-one.
Which probably should be six one, I'm guessing.
Yeah, thank you.
Good catch. I didn't didn't even notice that. Any other items? If not, could we have a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Motion Elliot, second.
Nolte.
Second Nolte, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion is approved unanimously. Number seven, planning and zoning information. Anne.
Well, I I do have one update that I wanted to mention, but before we go into that, I wanted to. Take a moment to recognize Maggie since this will be her. Her last meeting and. So thank you for your service on the commission, Maggie. And also thank you for attending the ISU extension training earlier in the year. And, you know, taking some time out of your schedule to learn more about planning and zoning. So. Thank you again for your service.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor and I feel like I've learned so much from all of you. Every time anybody asks a question, I would think, oh, gosh, I wish I would. So I I I've just have so much respect for what for what you're doing. It's a lot of time and effort. And you can tell that people. Really care and I I go way off feeling a lot better about the community. So it's been an honor.
It's kind of seemed pretty weird having come and gone and never actually been in person with us on any of these meetings. Anyway, thank you, Maggie, very much. I appreciate it very much. Anne, anything additional?
Um, one other thing. Today, we released our revised draft of the South District Form B code. I know that I think most of you know that this has been something that we've been working on for quite a while. And we've spent the last several months revising the draft based on stakeholder comments and revising it to make sure that it works within our existing. Kind of planning and zoning framework. So we released the draft and at your next meeting, actually, what we plan to do. Two kind of informational meetings for the commission because it's a lot of content and there's a lot of information that we want to go over with you. So on July first and then on July fifteen, we hope to have kind of. Part one introduction to the form-based code and then part two introduction of form-based code. Before you guys make any recommendations to to counsel.
All right, very good. Thank you, Anne. Anybody else have anything of general interest regarding finance owning for the chair of the commission?
I will be gone on July fifteenth.
July fifteen?
Yeah, I'll be up in the middle of nowhere in Big Horn National Forest, so I will not be able to join electronically. But in August, I will be gone the fifth and the nineteenth, but I will be able to be electronic.
Right. So for the minutes, if they can reflect that on July fifteenth, Phoebe Martin will be absent and then on August five and nineteen, she'll participate electronically.
If allowed.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Phoebe. Anything else for anybody?
I have a couple, a couple of things. I wasn't able to stay on. I wasn't able to stay on the. Watch the council meeting Tuesday after our session with them. Where did they go if any place with with the rezoning of that property?
The the first reading of the rezoning ordinance passed by vote is six to one.
Okay. And then, secondly, this is just a personal thing. I like to. I'm one of those nosy neighbors who likes to know what's going on. I drive by I drive by a house on the corner of Kirkwood and Keyakut. I think it's Keyakut. Every day and there's a there's a sign up that's been up for quite some time about a vacation. And I is that our is that us or is that some other community?
It's it's you guys.
This has an alley vacation?
The alley vacation. Me about it and I and I guessed it was an alley and I said, I don't know. We haven't seen it if it's coming to us, but I assume it's an alley because there's an alley right there.
Yeah.
We're still working on some information with the applicant, but that. Will probably be on your agenda soon. We'll see.
And I should state right now that I will not be able to. Comment on that one.
Maybe we could put it on the agenda. The meeting, you're going to be gone, Phoebe.
Like I actually, while while we were talking, I looked up the answer to the second one because there's a there's a special exception notice over at Sycamore Mall, and I see they're wanting to put in a drive-through teller, which I support because there's none in that part of town.
And then, Anne, on the consultation the commission had with the council the other day, I found that a good conversation. I thought it was helpful. If there's anything we can do to make that. More informative or helpful or beneficial to. To the council and if you hear any feedback, if you'd let us know, please.
Sure.
If there are no more comments, motion for adjournment.
So.
Motion by signs. Is there a second?
Maggie. Oh, okay.
Oh, Maggie. Maggie should do it.
Maggie, get in there. You do it.
Move to adjourn.
All right, so second by Elliot. So motion by science, second by Elliot. For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion is unanimous and we are adjourned and thank you, Maggie. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.